Zoom meeting, which will necessitate some procedures for remote participation. To use Zoom, you will need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application and create an account. While conducting remote meetings, we'll endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate additional meeting protocols. For instance, while the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio invited to speak by the chair, public participants joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. For general meetings and not special, uh, excuse me, and not public hearings and only for items under which the chair solicits public comment. Members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written question via text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the record. Members of the public viewing the meeting on ECAT may submit questions in writing via via email to D P E D at easton dot M A dot U S. Chair reserves the right to respond to questions during the live meeting, but may limit the time for such activities. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email and will be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting for the public record. All votes will be by roll call. For public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. When starting testimony, please state your name and address for the record. Chair reserves the right to designate a specific point of the hearing at which testimony may be offered, the duration of the comment period afforded to each individual and or entity, and the number of individuals entities permitted to speak. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held. And off topic commentary or indecent behavior will not be tolerated. The chair reserves the right to end the testimony of anyone who abuses the meeting platform. When all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn. We'll start tonight with a roll call. Weeks.
Here.
Get him.
Here.
Kid.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
And Stetson is here. I don't see Joanne. Okay. Well, the first item on the agenda is um Old Forge Commons request to release surety and before we get started on this one, Ken, this is one where I've been recusing myself throughout the life of this project due to my relationship with one of the butters. I mean, this is a request to release surety. I I really don't know if at this point I need to recuse myself, but I I certainly defer to you.
We do have, it does appear two, one, two, three. If you wanted to, you could, uh, you could just for the sake for um, there's enough extra, there's enough votes uh, with the other members here where you could recuse just to keep uh continuing with the tradition, so to speak.
For consistency, that that's fine. So I'll I'll jump off now. Mickey, the floor is yours.
Okay, uh, so um, I am gonna be honest, I'm on my back foot here because I just got back from a so we are covering the surety um for Old Forge Commons. Um, Ken, do you wanna go over? Do you have any any details?
Yep, so just really brief, this is the subdivision Old Forge Commons. Uh, looks like we got a uh letter from our consulting engineer. The outstanding work has been completed satisfactorily. We have uh roadway as built plans have been submitted. Uh, and engineer Pat Vernon has said that all the work uh that was needed on the remaining cost estimate form has been completed satisf- uh to a satisfaction. Uh, and according to this, the formal, the formal request type need to release the remaining money that's left in the construction cost estimate, June eighth of twenty-three. Uh, and on here, it's a total of two twenty-three, six sixty-one, so two hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars. Or whatever the remaining amount is if you include interest or things like that. These were done. Let's see here, the date from Pat Brennan was dated October twenty-fourth of this year. And so he's been satisfied with the work and he said that um uh, he said it was good working um with Mr. Humphrey and he has takes great pride in his work. So I do know that the uh applicant has sent in a drone shot, if I remember correctly, a drone shot video uh that you guys could review for this, but we've been out, we've looked at it. I took a ride with the previous director Stephanie. Uh, looking at the work, looking at the material, looking at the work. Uh, everything was done very nicely, just had to tie up some loose ends. And so that's the formal request here tonight is to accept the improvement, so to speak, in terms of they've been done set to the satisfaction uh of the consulting engineer and release the remaining uh funds. According to, like I said, according to the cost estimate, it's two hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars. Um, or whatever interest or whatever uh interest accruals would have been for that.
All right, thank you, Ken. Uh, board members, any comments, questions?
I drove by today to see the place and it looks very, very nice, so.
Thank you, Amos. Anyone else?
Uh, no, I agree. I've been by many times as well.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the release of the surety, get them.
Second.
All right, um, any further comment? Seeing none? Uh, kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Get them?
Aye.
And Wolf is an I as well. All right, Bob, you can come back now.
All right, thanks, guys. Thank you, Mickey. Sorry to put you on the spot there. My apologies for not giving you more advance notice. All right, up next, we have Weber Farm. Our pleasure. Up next, we have Weber Farm, and this is an architectural review for lot nine. Uh, Ken, do you wanna walk us through?
Yep, so this is a condition, I believe this is the last lot in Matthew Circle slash Weber Farm. And the condition that was done by a previous P Z B, which I don't believe maybe one of you was on here uh still from that period, uh as part of it being a flex development, there was some architectural review components. And if we look at the what up here, in the in the supporting documentation, there was a an attachment. It was kind of an architectural exterior rendering that had some hand drawn uh notation on it. This was a common requirement for the other house lots. In particular, I went back and looked at uh kind of looking into the conditions to kind of getting myself familiar with this project. The particular uh the notation up at the top, and I'll see if I can share my screen here. Everybody can see it?
Yes.
Okay, so the, this is a pretty standard requirement here. The PVC, the hardy board with PVC, uh the what hardy board with PVC trim was a requirement in terms of all the other house lot approvals. And it was consistent with the neighborhood and other similar approvals. The most recent one, I believe, was two lots over. And this was a similar uh architectural review, the sim- similar submittal was given to the board. I believe it was about a year and a half ago or so. And so this is a pretty standard requirement, the just notating the colors and the material. And the height is well within uh the height is well within the limitations. And to clarify, just some of the colors on here, the applicant uh had just gotten those situated and resubmitted the um the plan, as you see here, he was getting uh final details on the color from the design people. And so this material here, I can zoom in just a little bit. So this is what was done at the previous architectural review, and this is the same level of details that was submitted previously.
All right, thanks, Ken. Uh, board members, any questions or comments? Uh, it looks like we may have the applicant up. Any any thoughts or comments from the applicant? All right, uh, any motions?
Motion to accept the architectural plan as uh as presented, Kevin.
Second, Wolf.
Any further discussion, hearing and seeing none, get them.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Stetsons and I as well. All right. Next up is Envision Easton. This is a vote for the adoption of the twenty twenty-five master plan update. Uh, Ken, do we have Mr. Beitler presenting again, or what are your thoughts?
He is, yes, uh, Chair, just to give uh the board a little bit of context, Mr. Beitler is a little sick today. Um, so I know he wants to try and keep himself limited um to not exacerbate. I believe it's a cold or something like that. I thank him for not getting the rest of us sick, uh but he is here and if he would like, I can share the screen or he can just kind of discuss in general. It was included as part of the supporting materials that before it was provided. Uh, but up to the chair, Mr. Beitler, I can share the screen if you'd like and
No, I think that'd be great. I I think it's always useful to to share on the screen what we're talking about. Thank you.
All right, will do. Thank you. So I um believe I've been given a permission to talk, so perhaps you all can hear me here.
Yes.
Thumbs up, thank you. I believe we have um Jeff Bag from B S C Group. Is he in attendance?
Yes, I am here as well.
Awesome, yeah. So as this group knows, uh, we've been working on this Envision Easton uh master plan update for the last year or so with a master plan update committee um of about a dozen volunteer residents, uh have been working with the consultants, with uh stakeholders, the general public, through some public meetings on um updating the master plan, which is an update, it's not a comprehensive rewrite, and so it's targeting uh things that have changed in the last decade or so. And we've uh passed some real milestones here, you know, we've got the basically the final draft. Um, much of it was shared with this group, I think a month or two back. Um, we've also presented this final draft to the select board and um they've endorsed it. And so the topic tonight is, I think, to give this group a very quick overview of the final product and ask for a vote to adopt it. And with that, I'll hand it over to uh Jeff Bag.
Thanks, Wayne. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, glad to be back. I think it was September fifteenth uh was the date that um we, I virtually attended to give you the initial presentation. And as Wayne said, um, the document was open for a public review, still while we presented to you back in September. And I think one of the 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 two most significant changes um based on the public comments were the cr- the uh the inclusion of a vision statement. And so that appears on page four. Um, Ken, if you're able to scroll to that. You know, we weren't initially scoped with developing the vision statement, but it came through um your your meeting on September fif- fifteenth, it was it was identified, it was kind of discussed briefly. And then some of the public comments, I think, um, two of your members, Mr. Weeks and um I'm sorry, I only I only know Amos, Amos's first name, um submitted comments with regard to the importance of having the vision statement. So we pulled it together. It's not anything that's um terribly in depth. But given where we are with the process and the and the the scope that we had, we did put together the vision statement that we think fits comfortably within the the public comment that we received in the community engagement session. And really, it's just kind of talking about the next ten years. Um, Easton will continue to be a thriving, diverse, inclusive, connected and sustainable community that balances growth with preservation. And so that really is a simple statement, but it has many of the elements that we continued to hear through through the past year or so on this project. And then what we added was the the way the vision statement is set up is is these sort of five primary things that the town will will do in order to meet the vision. And those are to provide diverse housing options, so seniors can age in place and young families can afford to stay. Uh, support a strong local economy with vibrant commercial districts, thriving small businesses, and expanded job opportunities. Lead on climate action, protect natural resource, natural resources, reduce carbon emissions and per- and prepare, preparing for changing weather patterns. Strengthen public services and finances to maintain a high quality of life for residents of all ages and backgrounds. And preserve Easton's historic character, open spaces and village I I village identifi- uh, is that a typo? That should say identity, so we can fix scripters errors, but that should say village identity while welcoming thoughtful and well-planned new development. So, you know, based on all the comments we had, we we feel like this captures the essence of the ten-year look ahead. Um, and that's a that's a change that wasn't in the draft that the planning board looked at previously. And I don't know if there's if there's comment or the board wants to discuss that. The select board was very happy. Um, Wayne and I were at that meeting and they were very supportive of the ideas and sort of the the forward-thinking nature of the plan, really setting Easton up to continue what it's been doing. And so that's the vision statement, that's something that's new. And then the one other thing, if it's okay with the with the board, that I just really want to highlight in terms of um what has changed since you've seen it last was on page um almost there. Sorry, bear with me for one more minute. Ken, if you're able to go down to page, it's actually page one hundred. It's deep, deep into the document. This was a section that um the master plan update committee you took all the feedback that was received, the written feedback. And we, through that discussion, we kind of put together this this simple table, which lists the the comment on the left, describes it in the middle, and then um the committee reviewed a response, and then the the right-hand column is whether there were any changes to the master plan. So we we put this together and the committee discussed it, and it it's part of the appendices of the document. And so here's where we we tried to capture and address the public comments received to date. I think um, you know, the comments about the vision statement are included in here. And then I would say that, Ken, on page one oh two, um, it's just an example of one thing that the committee discussed. If you look at comment number fourteen, we had a sentence in the in the draft about a hotel um potentially being accommodated or or considered in the future. And so there was some concern that that was, that might have been too specific for for the master plan. And so the discussion with the M P U C was that really the the goal that is in the plan now is that there is sort of a specific master plan effort for the Washington Street corridor. And that at a future date, you know, if that project takes shape, that that project can determine whether or not there's a specific discussion of a hotel or not. So that was something that the committee felt pretty strongly about taking out. Um, and then that's something that the planning board should just be aware of, is that that was in the original draft and it's been, it's been simplified to make a statement that the entire Washington Street corridor should be subject to a master plan and you know, that would be a process unto itself. And at that time, the community can decide sort of the scope and things that are included. Um, I think with that, you know, I I didn't have a a presentation to give tonight, but I just wanted to touch on those two were sort of the seemingly most significant changes from the version that the planning board saw last time.
Well, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Wayne. Um, I guess I'll start with Amos and Alan, um, since, you know, your comments sort of prompted the uh the visioning statement. Do you guys have any any specific comments on those on those items or anything else?
Uh, no, that's exactly what I was asking for the for the document to have, is a summary. So someone can read this, it's a very long document, difficult to find. I have a specific question about an issue, but I will let this go first.
Alan?
No, I think that definitely is um i- is wh- what I think tees it up um very nicely. Um, I I guess the only question I do have i- is in terms of content. I I may be off base, but i- i- are improvements to the school system not a place for this Envision Eastern document? Is that happening someplace else, or could that have been part of this, should the committee have decided that there were uh improvements needed?
Yeah, and and the same way, I have an additional question is uh if you look at the demographic of Easton on the near future, is the grow of the seniors population significantly. And is there, I I tried to find somewhere on this document in which the seniors are taking in consideration for uh senior center or other uh issues that need care for this community. Uh, there is a very generic uh statement here about eh, you know, providing for all ages and identities, but specifically for the older population, for seniors, what what is on this plan?
Um, this is Jeff. I'll try to tackle both of these. Um, the the question that um Alan asked is a little bit more difficult. I'll I'll start with that one, is that, you know, through our through our process, we didn't really hear public comments on on embracing specific things that the school department would do. Um, I think A- A- Alan had submitted written comments too about, you know, increasing enrollment or the declining enrollment, and that that really was not prominent in what we saw the community being um what the community was discussing. And there there was definitely, you know, and and I don't need to remind you, because I know you were all part of the discussion, but the the discussion about the fiscal state of Easton had really penetrated kind of our whole process. And I think maybe because of that, the schools, you know, the school department never really chimed in, the members of the public who attended the the community engagement session, that was not a prominent discussion. So it's not, it's not prevalent here. Um, and I don't know, you know, if the planning board has a different position on that, but it's really just not something that we we heard a lot about. Um, and we can continue to discuss this, but I'll shift to the other um comment that Amos made about seniors. And so, you know, the master plan update committee did talk about this a lot, that did come up a lot in the community engagement. Just understanding that that is a demographic shift that the town will will need to be aware of. And we tried to cover this in a few different ways and different places. Um, the phrase that we were told is the is the best to use is uh sixty-five plus. And so if you type in the word senior, you may not get so too many hits, but um, Ken, if you don't mind going to page five. The committee at the last meeting, the the master plan update committee um at their last meeting had a pretty long discussion about on the on the right side of the page under public health and community services. Um, this this statement that's on page five here is ex- um expanding age-friendly initiatives, supporting mental health and social services and preparing for a growing sixty-five plus population. That is a a really important theme that is identified in the plan. And there are some goals that come through when you get into the matrix. The the real driving document for that is the the Easton Age Friendly, um Age Friendly Action Plan. And so we're really kind of pulling that action plan into the into this master plan update as the document that the town really needs to to look at for all the actions and activities that that will really support this growing sixty-five plus population. And then right under that, under the the next, the next bullet, under municipal buildings and facilities, you know, we did hear about it in the community uh, the community planning session. But really, it was the surplus properties project that seemed to really have more discussions about a new senior center. And so we have that captured here, this early in this in this major theme. And then we have a statement in the financial section that just tries to reckon a little bit with the fact that Easton does have some financial challenges ahead. You know, they will not last forever, but while those fiscal challenges are being resolved, it it will be difficult for the community to have the discussion about a senior center. But it is in the plan and it is it is identified as something that will come up in the next ten years. And so we feel like that's pretty well covered. So hopefully, that's kind of just a snapshot of the, you know, response for those two, those two questions.
I'll circle back to Alan's question, because I I mean, I maybe I'm misunderstanding the situation, but I see on this page number four, I mean, Easton faces fiscal challenges. I mean, the the most I, as far as I know, the the number one fiscal challenge is related to the school budget every year. Because that's the largest portion of of our town budget. So I mean, I I again, unless I'm missing something, I suspect that that is kind of threaded throughout this analysis because we are trying to stimulate growth, um, you know, l- l- large in the 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 tax base and all of that would feed naturally into the schools, or I would think would aspects of it would feed into the schools as well as perhaps senior center and and some of these other things, but I I I mean, Jeff, maybe you could comment on that. I mean, am I missing something?
No, Robert, I think that's a great observation. I mean, I I just wanted to be candid with you that I like the the issue of school enrollment did not specifically come up. However, the fiscal impacts of the school are are identified. Um, Ken, since you're assisting and it's really, I really appreciate it. If you could go to page um thirty-eight of the plan, this is where we have identified some of the fiscal, the financial trends and financial challenges. And so if you look on the challenges side, um, the bullets are are really important. And so there's structural budget deficits is the first one. Um, limited growth in revenue streams is the second bullet. And then the third one, which I just wanted to touch on, was sustainability of services. So, you know, service, service levels were reduced in the current year. So again, we're, you know, we're in twenty twenty-five for this. You know, the assessment of the conditions of Easton. You know, while the it's it's really looking at the health insurance and utilities, and then the other item here is that Easton's status as a chapter seventy uh minimum aid community entitles Eastern Public Schools to the minimum increase in state funding for K through twelve per year. And it gets often as little as one percent. This revenue pattern does not meet the current, you know, inflationary costs and pressures of health insurance, transportation and other fixed costs. So this is how we are looking at the schools as being critical moving forward. But it's not really tied to enrollment as much as the amount of state aid that Easton is eligible for. And so that's most likely the action that you would you would expect, you know, that the town administrator and maybe the select board to pursue increases in the amount of state aid, rather than pushing hard on increasing enrollment dramatically to 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 change the the discrepancy. So, you know, I I'm happy to have this conversation. I'm just trying to explain kind of how we position some of the financial, the financial challenges.
Jeff? Uh, any other board members? Comments, questions?
No, I think you answered my question, uh, that the school system improved, improvements to the school system could have been in here had that uh become prominent throughout your uh exploration of what the challenges were. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's fair. You know, one of the, one of the things that we had to do is we had to put some bumpers on what gets covered in this master plan. So this, as Wayne introduced it, it's a ten-year update. Uh, it was not intended to be the comprehensive rewrite, and I I did say this to the select board. The the twenty fourteen version of the master plan was was very robust, had so much information, and you know, it's like it was almost six hundred pages. Our task was really to look at what what has happened in the past ten years and what are what are the issues that the town really anticipates dealing with over the next ten years? And I think that with the new school being built, school enrollment is always going to be a question and issue, but it's not this prominent one. It's not this one that rose to the level of being embedded in the master plan. So Alan, I hope that answers your question. I I I think there's nothing precludes the town. Um, whether it's the the planning board or the select board or anyone else from pursuing efforts to to bolden, you know, embolden the schools to do something, but it's just not something that rose to the top um for for this for this ten-year look ahead.
That's interesting. I I may just have personal bias. Like, my wife taught in Oliver Ames for tw- uh, close to twenty years. Two of my children are educators, so there's a lot of discussion about school ratings around the dinner table uh frequently, and you know, one of the main reasons I moved to Easton back in the early nineties was the rating of the school system and, you know, a- as we know, things have changed. So I was just a little surprised it didn't bubble up uh in into the master plan as a opportunity for improvement.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you, Alan.
Yep.
In that context, I, I mean, I, that's one of the things that I've always found to be most appealing. And I guess what I had kind of thought was if we're talking about increasing revenue that. You know, that that would filter into the schools, but I guess there are a multitude of ways to do that and not just through economic development, I think as Jeff was saying. You know, some of that maybe falls on the select board to be petitioning the state for more funds and things of that nature. Man, I don't I don't know what that even looks like.
Yeah, I I and I'm not uh deeply involved in what the school committee may or may not be doing, you know, along the uh the areas of improvement. Um so I'm, you know, not uh not a hundred percent current on the issue, I just, you know. Thought thought it looked like an omission, but no, I understand, thank you very much.
Uh I I I can I say something about it is that regardless if there is financial support to do things. Uh at least there should be someplace where. The things that needs to be done or wants to be done should be put down. Uh even if you don't have the funds or maybe maybe it's logical not to talk about it when you don't. Have even the slightest hope that you can fund this, but. Uh I thought that this master plan should at least list was what what are those things, what? What the schools want to do, uh there is no money money for, whatever whatever that is.
Yeah, man, I think it's a I think it's a really great discussion, I would just not to push back in any way, but I would just say that it it no one ever. Said anything about the school, so you know, I I I don't necessarily think it's a a financial constraint that something could happen, but we. We have no action items that have been presented through this through the course of this to put in the master plan and. Maybe that's something that you know is something that can be looked at with the school department and the school committee, but we didn't really get any useful feedback. That pointed in one one direction or the other in terms of, you know, especially I think the one thing is enrollment, school enrollment and I and you know. We didn't hear, we didn't hear anything about that.
Well, I mean, I. Enrollment's one thing, but I I think Jeff, you you just mentioned that, you know, the select board could petition the state, so. You know, you're not a minimum aid community, I mean, we've we've you are talking about expanding the um the tax base, at least. Impliedly or implicitly in in many of the action items that I read, I mean, I I don't. And again, there's such a there's such a close connection between the budget and what you know, what's what the schools require, I mean. It's gotta be, it's gotta be related somehow, I mean, I I find it really extraordinary that that it had that it didn't come up.
Yeah, it I I I think again, what is required is something that you need to somehow. Put it on paper or put it on the list, so you know what those things are, teachers, wha- whatever that is. Whatever whatever are the things that the the schools in Eastern need needs to be put somewhere.
Well, I think it's also important to note also that the school department typically is. You know, outside of New England, they have their own taxing authority, they're pretty much treated as as their own entity. Up in New England, while they're not, they oftentimes set the base for the budget things. The master plan, it's important to note that a master plan is a land use. It it's a land use policy document, the all of these items typically are covered by the school committee. And they have their own, essentially their own master plans, so they'll have their own. Building needs committee, they have their own and the similar reason they have their own human resources personnel, the reason they have their own custodial staff. Because they have such a broad function of themselves, they typically will have their own. Um their own support staff that you typically don't see. For other departments, do the nature and the size and the the degree of work that they perform. By being a school department, so when you talk about facilities and things as it relates to enrollment and the idea of. You know, we deal with surplus land because it goes back to the town itself under care and custody, so forth and so on. And that's where the surplus properties committee aspect comes in, the decision or the. The wish list, so to speak, that would be for a school committee or the school department. To set out, okay, here's what we need to deal with enrollment figures, that's really kind of falls under the purview of the school committee.
Everybody keeps talking about enrollment figures, though, that's not, that's not what we're, that's just like a one small piece of what we're talking about here. I mean, you look at you look at just this page that we've got up right now, sustainability of services, that's really basic. And you know, you you're talking about the last line there says the revenue pattern does not meet current inflationary cost pressures, I mean. That's health insurance, that's you know pensions, I mean utilities, whatever it is, I mean. A- a- as a as a even as a planning board who's trying to think through, well, where can we generate some additional tax revenue? I think it'd be useful to have an understanding as to what's possible in terms of. I mean, I have no idea how much of this can be dealt with by lobbying the state. Or or I mean, maybe adding a few hundred students is gonna make a difference, I don't know, but it'd be useful to know. I mean, uh my guess is that a lot of this has to come from economic development, I mean, it's just my guess, but I don't know. And that's what we're talking about, I don't think we're trying to get too granular here, I mean, I think the point is that this is like the most. This is the thing that we spend the most money on here in town, as Alan mentioned, and certainly I feel this way, we moved here for the schools. I mean, they're connected.
Uh can I can I ask a quick question and that Mary may not res- resolve it is, uh I'm assuming the schools have like an updated strategic plan, right? Can we just connect the strategic plan without by just referencing to the strategic plan without like making specific. Like larger changes to this whole final draft, would that be an acceptable kind of? Match, cause I'm sure the strategic plan, I'm assuming they have, I think, believe they have, when I said I saw it referenced, but that it would. Kind of connect up all of what we're saying with the master plan without having to like add a bunch more language or copy it.
Man, I'm just sort of baffled that that we don't have, so you've got a master plan that is supposed to be. You're right, Ken, it is a it is, all we can do is manage the land and try to figure out how to. Make sure that it benefits the entire town in collecting tax revenue and then distributing that to the services that. You know, most residents need, I mean, that goes without saying, but when you've got the number one thing, the most expensive thing in the town is the school system. And you know, I can't sit here and know, well, how much additional revenue are we gonna need in the next ten years? Like really, what do we need to do from a planning perspective to alleviate some of that burden? And if the answer is simply, hey, this is up to the select board to figure that out and go lobby the the governor. Or the state house, whatever it is, then that's fine and that's an explanation. But if it is some combination, as I sus- suspect it is, between that growth. Cutting, I mean, cutting back on certain things, uh then then I'd like to know and I'd like to know then. What it is we need to do on our end from a land use perspective, cause that will really help determine what we do here in the next several years.
Yeah, it's a good discussion, um I don't really honestly don't have any very good answers for you, so I I'm gonna defer to Ken, I mean, Ken and uh Wayne. You know, our scope, our scope was to capture, you know, some of the main themes coming out. Over the next ten years and and clearly, Robert, I can hear, you know, the passion of what you're saying. Um I don't, I don't know how to to rectify it at this point, so um I am gonna ask Ken or Wayne if you have any thoughts.
Well, I think we have from the pers- from the limitations of what we can work with in terms of. The regulatory functions and also the. Ideas of what we can do moving forward in terms of economic development, all these, they do all tie together, the. Limitations in terms of how the state calculates the the s- the funding, so the sustainability of services. When we talk about minimum main community. I think it's kind of referenced in here that there's other options that may exist that are kind of outside. The realm of what a master plan is and what the charge was for this, but also understanding that. Within what we have the ability to work with that we can do, when we talk about. You know, increasing, uh you know, looking at certain areas that where zoning might be useful, the aspect of the Washington Street corridor. Looking at it and saying, okay, this is a particular corridor because of its importance and all the aspects of. Why it's unique and it's not the same thing as say some other street. When we look in, we say, okay, maybe we upzone in certain areas for these reasons, we downzone in these other areas to account for the upzoning in these other areas. Those are things that we can actually control, the aspect of the state aid calculation is something completely outside of. Not just the planning and zoning board, but of the ability of anybody here on staff, I certainly can't. There's really no function that would allow staff to have any meaningful input directly. We could say as part of these things is the petition, so to speak, to change that determination. And whatever that determination may be, may be outside of what even the select board could request, that could be a calculation for determining. Minimum aid versus maximum aid or intermediate aid, whatever the, you know, designations could be. That could be something that regardless of how well you you could have a uh an omnibus comprehensive plan that's. About fifteen hundred pages long and it talks about zoning and land use and open space and agriculture and all these great things, but they may say. It's income, it's an income, it's a specific income calculation and there's an algorithm and we get what you're trying to do, but. It doesn't fit with what the calculation that we need to follow is and also I think that the. With what this particular. As Jeff has always said, this was not meant to be a comprehensive rewrite, this is essentially, this is an update. Now, say in thirty-five, when we come back to this, perhaps it'll be different, but also with other master plans and comprehensive plans. There's really been more of a limited discussion on the schools because the schools really have. Uh their it's their own area and where they come up with these things and they they kind of silo themselves because of that. And the specific nature of state law regarding how school systems operate versus how the rest of, you know, the rest of municipal departments were.
Just a budget, it's it's a town budget, you know, you're looking at right here, it's it's talk, it's re- it's referencing something. It's saying the revenue pattern does not meet current inflationary cost pressures, I mean, that alone can be reduced to a number. It would be useful to know what that looks like in the next five to ten years, otherwise, there's a complete disconnect. Between uh the master plan and the budget, which I don't think makes any sense at all, to me. That's a lost opportunity, now it you may be right, Ken, I mean, maybe there's no way to do it, I have no idea, I mean, this is not what I do. Um but I can tell you that from where I sit, it's it's hearing all of this is very unsatisfying as a citizen. And you know, I don't blame Jeff and Wayne, I know they had a limited assignment, they said that from the get-go. And quite frankly, I I applaud them for their restraint in listening to our uh you know, commentary over the last couple of months. But I I I have to say, as a resident who just went through, you know, the 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 override vote. Uh last year and you know, or earlier this year, actually, and now who has to think about, as Alan points out. The degradation of the schools, I have school age kids, it's an unsatisfying answer and if there's something that we can do about it, something tangible. If we knew that we had to hit certain earmarks and it's more than just saying, hey. You know, we can develop more in Washington Street or we can develop more down on five corners, we actually need to grow. By X level in tax revenue and the best way to do that is with a wide development here, here or here. Then that's something that we can bring to the town as an action item, that's useful from a planning perspective. And maybe this isn't the assignment for that, but that's the assignment for us.
I think I think Robert, I think what you just said kind of struck me as as, you know. A great idea and I think it's, I think it's not what fits in this master plan, to be honest. Um you know, matching matching school enrollment trends with.
Keep talking about school enrollment trends, no one here is talking about that, we're talking about budget. Just just stop saying school enrollment, cause that's that's what's, that's what is giving me this passion. Okay, we've just went through this budget crisis, you're talking about it in this master plan, but you're not giving any anything actionable. I have never once talked about school enrollment, I haven't said it once.
Well, I think I think that's part, yeah, okay, so I I'm just gonna keep deferring to Ken and Wayne to see how you guys wanna resolve this, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I I think relative to school enrollment trends, if school enrollment trends are are a lagging indicator. Of how and why people move to town and put their kids in the school system, I I don't think we gain a lot by looking at enrollment trends. Because it tells us what has happened or is happening as opposed to, you know, some of the other issues that we've been talking about. Um I did have one question, though, this chapter seventy minimum aid community, is that something new or? My my guess is we've always probably been in that category, al- along with many surrounding towns, or i- did something change that put us there?
Nah, I think it's always been there, it's.
Which is why I'm 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 wondering why why it's coming up now. Okay, thank you.
And I also think just the to say, when you talk about sustainability of services, to say that, well, if we do. X in places for Y number period or something, the formula can, I mean, the sky's the limit, I mean, if it there's a. You know, if I said, okay, Washington Street, you could put up a for every parcel of land that's already there, not doing any sort of subdivision or Form A. The sky's the limit, you could literally put a mile high Illinois on every single parcel of land, reduce but like. You could say we can solve the problem and thing, but the that is too much of a deep dive exercise, a master plan is meant to be an overarching. Policy document that says we recognize. Issues, we recognize where the town wants to go based off feedback, here are some ideas of where we can have larger. Targeted points, targeted point being, for instance, Washington Street corridor. Look at the Washington Street corridor and in the future, maybe something can be done based off of what that final product would be of looking at it. The actual deep dive of saying, you know, here's where we need to come up with the numbers to do all these things. It it's outside of a master plan, what a master plan is by definition, that would come in through actual budgeting on the financial side, on the administration side. In terms of what they show and of for town meeting in the budget process of saying, we need to be able to do this. In order to have that shortfall, they just had.
Isn't that what the whole point of this exercise is, so that we as a planning board. As volunteers who are not privy to all these budgeting discussions can look at a document and say, okay. Now this is a guidepost for us and this is something that we can then take, you know, when we have to stand up in front of, you know, five hundred, five hundred and fifty people. At that town meeting and say, this is why we wanna push for a zoning change, it's because of X, Y and Z, we have at least got that ammunition. And that we can explain ourselves, because without that, we're just, I mean, you're right, we're just. Sky's the limit or the ground is where we're at, I mean, it just doesn't change anything.
Well, Robert, I've been, I I'm gonna try me one more time, I I don't know if I'm gonna change your mind in any way, um but you know, part of. Part of I think the challenge in general that we all experienced as part of this project. Was was the dead exclusion process, the the year-long effort of pace. Um and I think the the failed um override vote had a significant impact on what. Solutions there are for some of this, some of some of what you're saying, I I totally agree with, some of. Some of the things in the master plan are perfect for land use and ways that, you know, innovative land use and more development could help. Um alleviate some of the pressure, but some of these, some of the some of the things I think you're picking up on. Are are items that are most likely only gonna be solved with with increasing the budget directly. And I think kind of the the land use patterns or, you know, zoning changes will only have a a minor change to the like kind of move the dial only a little bit. Whereas, you know, eight million dollar deficit um has a has a huge impact in. This column here that we're still looking at this this financial challenges section, so some of the things I think you're thinking about are only gonna be solved with. An actual increase to the budget and you know, we had, we had some dialogue with the town administrator um on this section. And, you know, we had, we had some dialogue with the town administrator, um, on this section. And there were, there were some goals and actions that got taken out. And it was our, or we were directed to take them out because those require. Sign, you know, those require the increase in the budget, which is not currently available. And I'm just trying to figure out how to kind of navigate this, which is, I think. Um, you know, the town is, is likely to continue to have some of these big budget discussions. And the master plan is only gonna really be able to move the dial a little bit on, on really some of the revenue that's missing right now. And I, I don't know if that's helpful, but I think that some of your issues and certainly the passion that you're bringing. Is more directed at the town administrator and the responsibilities of the select board. I don't think it's a shortcoming of this master plan. I just think that the master plan and the things included in it are never gonna fill an eight million dollar budget deficit. So I think that there's, there's this really important missing piece, um, that we, that we navigated through with the project. And, you know, maybe if that changes, um, over the next couple of years, maybe the, maybe there's a, a, a way to revisit. Kind of these certain strategies that, that cost a lot of money, especially with, with regard to the school budget. Again, I don't know if I'm persuading you in any way, but I just think that the master plan, if you look at the scope of what it includes. It doesn't include increasing the actual budget, and that's, that's one of these big problems that, you know. I think exists for at least the time being. And the master plan can only work on certain components to really, to make sure that the town's poised and ready. To kind of keep, keep trucking forward on some of these initiatives that fall a little bit more in the English. Hopefully that helps a little bit.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? I've taken up a lot of time on this.
I'll just say one more thing and I, I'm pushing my luck here, but I, I would, I would, I would argue that. You, as a community, will be in a much better place to have an adopted master plan. Rather than kind of pushing this out. I'm just concerned that pushing this out, I'm not, I'm not really sure. You know, we won't be able to collect the data, the numbers that you want. I think a lot of that was identified through the PACE program. And it boiled down to what is really necessary is, is a pretty large, you know, um. Proposition override to, to fill these gaps and to really kind of fill out the school efforts. Are really hinging on, on that buch- budget deficit and, and less so on the master plan itself. So again, I, I would think that. You know, urging you to consider adopting it, cause I think you're gonna be in a much better place to pursue all the other really important efforts. Um, instead of kind of waiting for, for this kind of circular conversation happening with the schools. Which I, I am afraid is really contingent upon kind of some kind of override discussion that's not gonna get solved with the master plan.
Uh, can I, can I just, then what is the point of this? I mean, cause that's, you know, if you're trying to generate revenue, if that's one of the main goals of land use policy, to raise tax revenue. And we aren't talking about that in a structured way, then wh- what are we doing? Or just having an aspirational discussion about.
That's absolutely it, yes.
A u- a utopia that we all wish we could have if we had the money for it.
Yeah, Robert, I think you're right. It is, it is a little bit like that, this is.
So it's, this is a completely unsatisfying discussion, and I mean, I think everyone knows where I stand. Um, you know, but I'm not trying to twist anyone's arm, I mean, I've.
Yeah, I'm not either. Eh, if you guys don't choose adopted, I think that's okay, but I think this is an overarching umbrella document. Within it, the town has a ton of work to do. A lot more specific plans will need to be done to investigate. Um, different areas, and so I'm not gonna go into all of them, but, you know, each, this is not intended to solve all the problems. This is to map out. Areas of focus and areas where the town will need to apply additional concerted effort. Um, I would argue that this will provide the town with a lot of guidance. Eh, we heard a lot about the industrial park. And supporting the town's effort to go into the intermunicipal agreement with Brockton. You know, that's gonna be a couple of years worth of discussions and. Um, that by itself. Got a lot of public support and that gives the town a direction to say that this was supported in the master plan. This will bring in tax revenue. And we all need to be at the table to kind of make that happen. The Washington Street corridor. Uh, needs some love, it needs attention, it needs a, it needs a plan unto itself, and this document kind of gives you the roadmap to do that. Um, looking at arts and culture and safe houses, schools and transportation. The mass DOT tip projects that the town has queued up are gonna be years of effort and investment by all, everyone involved. In the town to really support those and make sure they happen. So, again, tho- all those really important projects are captured in here and it gives the roadmaps for, for people. Like yourself and town meeting members to look at moving forward. So I think with that, I'll, I'll again, kind of defer back to Ken and Wayne as to what we do next here.
Alright, well, why don't we, it's up for a vote for adoption, um. I think it, do, do we need a motion for that, Ken, or is it just a vote? Yeah, so I, I will accept a motion.
Motion to adopt the Eastern Master Plan?
Second.
Sorry, Wolf.
Second.
Alright, and, uh, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Wolf?
Hi.
Kid?
Aye.
Get him.
I think he dropped off.
Oh. Weeks?
Aye.
Stetsons and Naye. Um, so I don't know if we need, uh. Amos back on?
It'd be good to hear from Amos.
Oh, I think he's, I think we, hold on, I think he's coming back. We promoted again, I think we just got back into the. Panels, there we go, I think it just popped up.
Uh, is it, my vote is a high.
Okay.
Is it what?
He got an eye. He, he said, yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Alright, thank you all. Alright, moving on. Next up, meeting minutes from last time.
Motion to approve Kevin.
Uh, second?
Any further, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, get him.
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
I'm gonna abstain, cause I wasn't there, or can I vote yes?
I wasn't there either. Uh, you could abstain. Weeks?
Uh, aye, I was there.
Alright, I'll abstain as well. I wasn't there. Alright, thank you. Uh, next, chair updates. None this week. Uh, planning director updates.
I'll just keep it short. At the last meeting, uh, some of the, is in regards to the permitting audit, so I'll just kind of put the two of them together. Uh, just to get everybody on the same page, I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna break out the implementation. Action items that are in the permitting audit. I'll break those out in relation to this particular board, their activities. Um, you know, things like updating rules and regulations, simple public hearing, uh, with the board here for an adoption. Um, that was a request. I believe it was a member, Kedham, that requested that. Uh, I just wanted to get everybody on the same page. Uh, so when you see that, there's context as for what that is, but. Uh, I was just gonna have it as a standing item, just in case we have any particular items we wanted to talk about, or if. We'd come across something that we felt was, um, we wanted to have, uh, for a discussion. Uh, but I'll be sending that out. I'll probably do it tomorrow, just like, uh, breaking that out so everybody has context for that. Um. Uh, I will be setting up a meeting, uh, obviously under the next meetings, you'll see that, just as a, um, attendance. So to speak, cause technically if you guys go even as private residents to town meeting. Uh, you still have to, I did it just as a, um, you know, as a precautionary item. Uh, but I don't foresee there being any discussion items, just saying that the planning and zoning board members may attend town meeting. Uh, but there's no actual discussion that, you know, we'd be having as a group, but just to say for the. Quorum purposes. Um, other than that, we are going through, I did just get the paperwork this morning for. Uh, the final construction of the four lots at, uh, Fair Lane right next door, one fifty-four Helm Street. I'll be processing that here shortly, and then we have some other small, uh, ninety-five union, which will be. Lots will at some point become winter very lane addresses. Uh, so some smaller items, just kind of getting the final materials from the applicants and getting them recorded. Uh, so we're moving forward on that nicely.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. Alright, I think that's about it for tonight. I'll accept one final motion.
Motion to adjourn Kevin.
Second Wolf.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, get him.
Aye.
Wolf?
Hi.
Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Stetsons and I as well. Have a good night, Easton.
Good night and good luck.
Thanks, Amos.
Thank you.